Good evening, everyone. We appreciate you being here. Great day. We just need a little rain and Commissioner Hollingworth in your prayer this afternoon. You asked the good Lord to send us some rain. At this time, I would like for everyone to stand. Commissioner Hollingworth will lead us into invocation and also to pledge to the U.S. flag.
By our hands. Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done for us. We want to say a special prayer, just like Rocky did earlier, for the Perry family, a young man gone way too soon. And I want to say a special prayer for these kids we got here today. We've been blessed with that for the last few meetings, and it's just good to see productive young men and women. And it just warms our souls as county commissioners to do everything we can for them, make sure that they have a good life and have a future. And I will pray for rain, but I know it's in your plan to keep it aloft and give it to us later, so I'm not going to argue about that. But I hope that you'll give us the wisdom and the strength to make the decisions we need to make today. And I pray for our soldiers overseas and I pray for our law enforcement. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite in its justice.
Our staff, is there any additions or relations to this afternoon's meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Due to unforeseen circumstances, both the introduction of the Swanee Valley Transit Authority Director and the presentation of the Safety and Risk Manager, Management Member of the Year need to be pulled from this agenda and moved to another agenda. And we have three additions. One is to actually, a request by the chamber for the 2024 fireworks related to road closings and street closings. Two is a presentation for Farm to Table. And three is the solid waste collection franchise application for Public Services of Florida.
The board, any...
Got a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. At this time, FFA, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, we got a presentation here, I believe, tonight from the Farm to Table. It looks and appears to me. So you got the floor, take it over.
Well, we would like to say thank you very much. It's a pleasure for us to be here and to share with you what a benefit Farm to Table has been to our community. And we want to ask all of our youth to stand and our 4Hers. I'm so proud of them. I'm so proud of them. Thank you, guys. I just want you to know that Farm to Table, we brought this to you, our team did three years ago, it seems like now. It doesn't seem like it's been three years. But we brought it and we brought the idea to you and you caught the vision, just like we did, that our community, our roots, our ag, and we need to keep that alive in this area. And that's what we're trying to do and that's what we have been doing. We have brought in a great deal of money, which they're going to share with you and how it's benefited Columbia County. But we also want to just thank you. Thank you for catching it and giving us the opportunity and giving us sponsorship each year of $3,000, which has really helped us. And I'm going to turn it over now to Noah Walker and he's going to share with you our financial aspect.
Right, yeah. As Kimmy said, this was started by a small group. Really, just two people got together and that was Terry Phillips and Kimmy Roberts. I got together and bulldogged this through, pulled the rest of us into it, kind of like a vortex of need, which was really chaotic at times, but it turned out a really great product in Farm to Table. And I think that I've seen some of you guys there, brought in a lot of businesses, a lot of partners from across the area. In 2022, the event, the one night event, earned $40,000. It turned out six scholarships at the tune of $15,000 to seniors from this county in Fort White and Columbia. And then it turned out another several thousand dollars in funding to the local chapters of FFA that are at all the schools as well as 4H. In 2023, they earned over that. They earned about 10% more, $43,729. Again, six more scholarships to seniors from Columbia County Schools, Columbia High School, as well as Fort White. And then more funding, I think it doubled the level of funding that went to FFA chapters and 4H. So my hat's off to the two ladies that put it together, it's Kimmy and Terry, they did a wonderful job. And again, they brought us in, the vortex of need, which sweeps up everybody that's needed. So that's all I got.
Now, let us introduce, this is Heather. She's our 4H director here in Columbia County and she's going to share with you some more points.
So I'm the county extension director. You know we're a lot more visual and a little bit more detailed. Sorry, these guys did fantastic, but I'm going to show you like all of this stuff in person. You got your little screens in front of you. You can see the pictures even of yourselves at the event, some of the kids walking around. But as I said, Columbia has deep roots in agriculture. There's a large community of talented culinary chefs. They've been all around the community and we've tried to pull in all of the ones we could. There's also a growing presence of cottage foods in the area, so we want to make sure we showcase that. And it's also the biggest opportunity to showcase agriculture's connection to the county. You see the FFA logo, the 4H logo. We have youth, you know you support the county extension department, but you also support the schools and the things that are done with agriculture there. So, as I said, you guys put in $3,000. Well, the city also put in $3,000. You guys definitely put in a whole lot, because whenever you think about it, you also have the entirety of the extension office that we are involved in this event. Every one of my agents get pulled in. Yes, you're seeing your pictures on there, sorry. But as Noah said, you've got $43,272 and brought in this year in cash to the event. So that's what allowed the event to run and that's tickets sold, the auction and actual cash donations. So, the bigger picture is, we had tons of other things that were put into this event. 93 youth volunteers. I know those of you that were there, you saw all of these guys running around everywhere that night. We had 42 adult volunteers. So yes, you have all the FFA and the 4Hers, their parents were there as well. So they actually signed in. Some of the pictures, you'll see parents actually serving. I've got some 4Hers that their parents just stepped up and was behind and fixing the plates for them. We had 23 chefs in their assistance and they donated, we'll say, over 110 hours of their time, because they had to prepare everything in advance. 17 vendors that donated, we'll say, 81 hours of their time total. 472 pounds of peanut butter. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but we actually take that peanut butter and take it to Catholic food charities to the Fort White pantry as well. And we make sure that that peanut butter is donated between Thanksgiving and Christmas, because everybody gets lots of food for Christmas, they get lots of food for Thanksgiving, but what does that family do if they don't have food in between times? So that's one of our office things that we contribute. We also had 167 canned foods donated, 27 auction baskets, all the amenities and Derby Pavilion, the lights and tents and equipment, and then the chefs' kitchens, and then actual some local food holding facility. So I know we use freezers at different places. So lots of stuff went into it, right? So, minimum inputs and that minimum, right? So huge outputs. So inputs wise, as we said, we had $43,000 of cash income. Whenever you look at volunteer hours, I don't know if y'all are familiar, but there is actually the independent sector where they calculate the value of volunteer hour every year. In last year's calculation, actually it's 2022, they hadn't updated the 2023 number, because they're always a year behind. It is $29.41 an hour that we would have to pay these youth, these adults, these chefs, to participate in this. That is the average per hour that it cost us for a volunteer. So in actuality, we saved $24,000, over $24,000 of volunteer hours. And then of in-kind goods and services, so that is all the stuff that's donated to the event, all the things that are given, that's rental of facilities, holding spaces, refrigerators, all of the stuff that comes into an event, that calculated to over $31,000. So there's a lot that came in. But then the outputs, as they said, we did $11,000 for expenses. That's how much it cost us to put on that amazing night. That's all, which is really stinking awesome. But then, for scholarships, we paid out $9,000 this year. And we also gave out over $17,000 to 4H and FFA chapters. So how many of you guys got to go to convention? So state convention, you see every one of these guys that are sitting right here, and there were lots of others. They were allowed to go to state convention because of that money, so it really helped. So you had over $99,000 input into the event. And right now, we're at $37,000 that we actually had as outputs. So small outputs, considering how much was input as far as the volunteer hours go, but we really have a priceless benefit to agriculture that is happening in this community because of that event. So thank you so much. We truly appreciate everything you guys have done to support. Your presence at the event makes it that much better. You see all these smiling faces of all these kiddos that they truly appreciate the sport that they get, not just from their leaders, not just from their advisors. They appreciate any other adults that truly show that they value them. And that's one of the most important things that we can do for our youth in this county. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We also want to tell you that this has drew recognition all the way into the Capitol. We got pictures from the Commissioner of Agriculture with our Farm to Table tractors, which I know all of you got, on his desk and they sent pictures to us. So we have received recognition in Washington now and Tallahassee. So we're excited. A lot of them are already calling us, wanting to, no, when is your date? When is your date? So we're drawing attention to Columbia County and we thank you very much for catching the vision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. We have three public hearings. Mr. Gooden?
Good evening, commissioners. How y'all doing? The first public hearing is repealing ordinance 2024-03. There was, this involves the Northern Duda. This is an urban development area up here north of town. The procedural problems will get ran into it. It has to be repealed. And then you'll have to follow in this, re-adopt. This is basically the same thing, well, not basically, it is the same thing. CPA 0243, which establishes, it was the final hearing on this Northern Duda.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-10, appealing ordinance number 2024-03. Would there be anyone to speak in opposition of the county appealing this ordinance? Now hearing ended, I declare the public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
Chair, I make a motion to accept the appeal ordinance number 2024-03.
Mr. Murphy? Second? Okay.
2024-10, sorry.
All right, we're second?
Second.
On the 10.
Second, Mr. Phillips, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Okay. The second item here is re-adopting CPA 0243 via ordinance 2024-11. This is in essence the exact same application that's considered in the March meeting with some various minor details and those are outlined in your packet there. But in essence, it's the same Duda that was proposed to you back in March.
I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-11, CPA 0243. Would there be anyone to speak in opposition of this one? Would there be any opposition? I declare this public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
Make the motion to approve ordinance number 2024-11 as presented.
Mr. Murphy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ford, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
The third item here is the presentation of the final plat for Forest Cove subdivision. Mr. Rob Stewart's here with that one. If you have any questions, the plat was in your package there. Public Works is okay with it. There is some MSBU, but this, there will be an MSBU with this subdivision, but this actually fell in prior to, the application came in prior to the passing of the need for the MSBU. But Mr. Stewart has assured me that it's going to be, even though it's not eligible for requiring it, it will be carried through with it.
Do this, Forest Cove meet the criteria of the final plat?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Chairman, I move we approve Forest Cove final plat presentation.
I got to have a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
I declare the public hearing open.
Anybody go.
I declare the public hearing open on Forest Cove final plat presentation. There's no opposition. Now I declare this public hearing closed. Mr. Hollingworth?
I'll repeat my motion. Say, and it was a pla, I think Kirby, it was a pleasure working with Mr. Stewart. Approved Forest Cove final plat presentation.
Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Ms. Chair, I wanted to point out, as Commissioner Hollingsworth said, Mr. Stewart in developing this, he did the process that you laid out. Designed it, built it, had it verified that it was built correctly, and then it came to you for the final plat. This is what it'll look like in the future. Mr. Stewart, really, we owe him a thanks, because he was our guinea pig on a lot.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Believe me, there are a lot more emails on his project than there probably were on any other project.
Thank you. A motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion by Mr. Holling, a motion by Mr. Phillips? Second by Mr. Hollingworth, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Ford, second, Mr. Phillips, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries. Mr. Gooden, you back up?
You better.
Louis, back up.
He forgot he had more. Oh, they, Chairman, they want a photo with the kids, kids, a photo with the kids and all? Before they leave, they want a photo.
Okay. All right, we, okay.
Take a break.
I'll take a break.
Going now?
Yeah.
We ready?
Unless you stand in front of here, of course, they tall as we are. What do y'all want to be? Putting out a closet to keep roaches away. You didn't want to get in that one, huh, Kevin? Bill Goddard is there everywhere. She doing good. She's a smart man. She knows what I mean now. I beat her about once a week. Her fiance doesn't like it, but I still win. Good seeing you, darling. Y'all doing a good job. See y'all later.
All right, Mr. Gooden?
Every time I leave, my foot crack up. We're going to get overtime today, Louis.
This is Monday for me. I just coming back into town and I'm still retraining today. The Sabreons have a minor subdivision replat request of the board. This is in a subdivision here. They want to combine two lots and want to build on the original, on one of the original boundary lines. All the information is in your packet there. This is the procedure we followed several other times since I've been on board here. And this is just a very minor subdivision replat. Basically combining two subdivided parcels, as stated in your packet there.
All right, I need a motion to approve this matter. Subdivision change? I got a motion.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Ford, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
It was by ever, wasn't it? A motion by ever? Yeah, yeah. You keep mistaking me for him, we're going to have problems that way. It's odd. Can I be excused?
Mr. Ford?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The board will recall, a few meetings back, there was discussion about the new consolidated local workforce development area 26. This is where our four county local workforce development area is being consolidated with the area that includes Alachua and Bradford Counties. The board at that time, we had some discussion. There were concerns about what we call the Alachua County approved plan that kind of put all the political power, all the decision-making authority in Alachua County. They did make a change to it, but while they gave one county one vote on the consortium board, Alachua County was able to unilaterally appoint 12 of the 19 members to the local workforce development board, which is kind of the same thing. So Commissioner Hollingsworth has spent quite a bit of time studying this and going back and forth. I've met with Mr. Norris. I've looked at both of these agreements. Unless the attitude of the board is different than it was before, it's my recommendation to adopt the version that was approved by Gilchrist County and Dixie County and drafted by Mr. Norris as the Area 7 Attorney. And that would be the first one that's on your agenda. I did present the other one on the agenda. I'm happy to talk about it if you'd like to, but I'll represent to you that it creates a lot more political power in Alachua County.
Hollingsworth, you got anything you want to add?
Well, just like Joel's saying, we went from, we got our one vote county, but then they just, it's kind of like, what's a way we can...
Try the backdoor then.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like saying, well, I'm going to give you $2 and then he's going to steal two back. It's like, they gave us something that we wanted, but then they took something they had given us. You know, so it was a trade-off that, it just doesn't, it just doesn't suit me, because it's pretty much Alachua County having full control of really everything, you know? So I, and I know that we committed a violation by making our own agreement. This thing has been, first, we committed violations and I never knew there was a way to violate anything in this agreement, but it's very obvious that, to me, that there is a... I don't know how to say it. There's a push to just accept what Alachua County's doing and that's the end of it. And I just can't do that for the people of Columbia County. I can't be beholden to Alachua County for everything we want, wants and needs, you know? That's just how I feel about it. So I make a motion that we approve the, our, our violation.
The region seven.
Yeah, yeah, our region, yeah, our region seven. What would you call it? Plan.
Interlocal agreement.
Yeah, interlocal agreement. But, you know, we're still working on it, but I think if we approve that, if it does go to Tallahassee to make the decision, which is fine with me, they'll be able to see the two and compare them and go, which one's more fair? And I believe ours is the fairest.
Motion by Mr. Hollingworth?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ford, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Ms. Chair, if I could ask real quickly. In order for this to go to Tallahassee with the full political support it needs, and I talked to Commissioner Hollingsworth about this, if the board would authorize Commissioner Hollingsworth to write a letter, I'll assist him with it, to Representative Brandon and kind of explain our experience and what's been going on and try to enlist Representative Brandon to help us with the governor's office. We're concerned that because the folks in Tallahassee were really kind of locked at the hip of Alachua County through most of this process, that we'll lose our voice over there. So we really feel like it's important. And so if that motion could be made to authorize Commissioner Hollingsworth, it'd be very helpful.
I need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize Commissioner Hollingsworth to write a letter to Representative Brandon.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Commissioner Ford.
And there's one more thing I want to say to y'all, just to make sure if somebody brings this up to you, you know, there is not one other workforce board or development or careers anywhere in Florida that does it like they're wanting Alachua County to do it. Not one. There is one. And we asked them that question during the thing, well, who else does it this way? Because they were telling us in the beginning that everybody did it, or two or three counties did it this way. Not one county does it that way. In fact, Miami-Dade does, but the problem with Miami-Dade as a comparison to us, it's just one county. They do it themselves. They don't have other counties that need help or... It's just like, you know, Jacksonville has one vote, McClinney has one vote. In the beginning, they wanted us to have less than, you know, so it's just, to me, if you're going to start something new and we're the only county that's being subjected to it, the only set of counties that are being subjected to it. So to me, that's unfair and I think it ought to be done like everybody else. We ought to be like every other county in the state, you know?
All in favor of the motion, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Ms. Chair, the next item on the agenda is the AmeriPro backup EMS contract. I will share with the board as an aside, we received word from county staff today that our primary contractor is on track. They've met their first set of deadlines. That was very welcome news. This is the AmeriPro backup contract. This is something that you already considered when you approved Columbia EMS. One thing that's missing, and I would ask for the motion to include this amendment, is a 90-day termination clause. That is something that was discussed, because they may want to get out of it. We may want to get out of it at some point, and it's not in there. So if it can be, if it is going to be a motion to approve, if it could be approved with that amendment, then I'll ask for them to take that.
Motion without amendment?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Phillips?
You got it.
All in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
And Chair, I called Joel relevant to this, that's why I waited to the end. There was a couple, not concerns, but just questions. And I think he, according to Joel and the way this negotiation took place, I think we, I think it's a necessary evil and I think it gives the county a lot of protection. And, you know, figured out that Jason Rosenthal, I guess it was, he's the liaison. So that was one of the biggest concerns anybody had with me, you know, do we have anybody, who's oversee of the contract? But now with Jason being there, I think we've done as good as we can with what we got to work with, not look forward to everything coming together more, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have two easy ones and one hard one tonight. The first is your mosquito control budget. So basically, we're getting a raise to be a total of $65,494 over what is $38,892. So I'm requesting a motion to approve and execute the detailed work plan budget for fiscal year 2425 to FDACS for the amount of $65,494, 12.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Thank you. The next is it relates to litter control on your ride of wage. The grant from FDEP can utilize to assist litter removal. The grant amount is $93,750, the same as current. Requesting a motion of proven executing small county consolidated waste grant agreement for the amount of $93,750.
Motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hollingworth, Mr. Phillips, second, all in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, Mr. Phillips? All in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, lights on, that motion carries.
Okay. And the third, I was requested bring Rum Island back to the boardroom. Before we start talking about what we're going to do to fix Rum Island, I'm going to give you an example. We got ready, as far as I can remember, there was a little asphalt milling partway down there when we built the bathrooms. We noticed that we did not have a handicap parking spot once we constructed those hundreds of thousands all over the bathrooms. The reason I'm bringing this up, and I'll give you the punchline. I was asked, why can't we do like it's at any state park? Have a little building, a little guard in it, you know, collecting the money, making sure things tend to. We don't have the real estate. So if we were going to go down there and do something like that, I would have to widen the highway and, you know, build stuff. Going back to my little parking pad, we wore out three Ford trucks and 10 telephones getting the permit to build that. Don't, I'm not smart enough to know all those details of why we had to do that, but if for no other reason, I think that'd be a small act of Congress. Don't let, I'm not smart enough to know all those details of why we had to do that, but if for no other reason, I think that'd be a small act of Congress. I don't know what to do to fix Rum Island. Clint, I've discussed the Fourth of July coming up, we're gonna get law enforcement to help us. I mean, it's a Band-Aid, but, Mr. Chairman, you asked me to bring back up Rum Island, we tossed it around every which way but Sunday? I don't know, you, you're dealing with a small piece of real estate. You know, somebody brought up the fact, like at Hixton in the midway, they cut you off, X amount of vehicles, or folks, they cut you off. So I guess there's ten ways to skin a cat, but I'm open to discussion. But that Rum Island, um, it's not an easy fix. You got a little bit of park, a lot of folks. But what we do know is, we go down, we put salt restoration in, we put sod in, we do all this, it gets torn. We put a gate up, it gets torn. You, I, I don't know. You're hurting cats.
Mr. Murphy, yes, I'm.
Who, who can you give it to?
The federal government.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, 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 and again, question would be, would they take it back?
Right.
Um, but that is our only recourse, we can't, we can't move it any other way.
Waterman, waterman.
I think you're limited, you know, I, I really believe, right out the gate, the best you're gonna do is on your holiday weekends is have your law enforcement there. Um, and, and, you know, it's a monetary thing, how much are you willing to spend? But I, I'm of the opinion, I, I might be willing, but before we go out there and do a lot of engineering and all that good stuff, i- if we had more real estate, I think you could do a lot of different things, and you probably would have the problem you have to begin with, but you do not. But there's a lot of ideas of other parks, I personally do not know of such a small piece of real estate that has that many folks trying to come to it. But you know, if you put your guard down there, what, what power does he have? What, you gonna put a hundred fifty-pound man, woman down there and, will federal, right, gonna come there, UK come in? How's that gonna work?
It, it's no fix for it. I'm telling you guys, there's no fix for it. Unless you gonna hire law enforcement to be down there all the time, that's the only fix there is to it. You can't put an individual down there that don't have credentials with a gun on the side, 'cause they gonna kill it. The whole problem, look, Kevin, you're right, it's just, you don't have real estate down there for the people to try to use it.
What, what is it, a couple acres a day? It ain't much, is it?
It's not much.
Ain't much, huh?
But, uh, I, I, I think the only thing you can do is enforce the rules somehow or another, as, as far as the number of cars parked in there, if it's full. You know, I don't know how you keep them out, though, they walk in.
Right, and Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Williams indicated, who's going to enforce that?
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be an argumentative, you know, and, and like you just said, they're gonna park a car, you know, we got all kinds of problems, you got neighbors, they get blocked in. You know, and that's not right, I told you, my property, I'll stay over here with my property.
I've got, I got pictures today, I was, Clint's got them on his phone too, they tore the salt system up down there, I mean, they just, uh,
What?
Oh, yeah, they, it's, it's. No fix for it.
Who, who, uh, Kevin, uh, who, who gave it, I know Clint made mention of it, but who, who actually give it to the county back when they did? How, how do we become a?
I, I don't know, ever since I've been here, we have.
Yeah, mm-hmm, 'cause I think you say Clint, you can't deed it out, is that correct?
No.
Sure, Clint's hair wouldn't be quite as gray if he didn't have to worry about that, I'd tell you that.
What little he had.
Commissioners and Joel can correct me on this, uh, he's looked at the deed over the years, he probably understands that kind of language a lot better than I do. But in the original deed, when we received that property, it was from an agency with the federal government, and in that deed, it states that we cannot relinquish that property or give it to any other agency. Unless it goes back to them, the county's the sole owner of that property.
Yeah, that's correct, it's for public, it's for public use as a park, and if we ever don't do that, we give it back to the federal government.
That's what, what the park was, Joe.
I, I don't remember, I was trying to pull it up, probably the interior, it's usually the interior that's giving out property.
What would the federal government do with it, you think, Joel, if they got it back?
I would have no earthly idea. I think it's highly unlikely they'd operate a park there.
I know that we've tried everything that he'll, except for putting armed guards down there, armed policemen.
And what's sad about it is Rocky, you know, all got together and made it so nice.
Well, that was all started before I got here, but yeah, we worked on it, I mean, you know, uh, but basically, everything we done is, is, is about, been destroyed.
Mr. Kirby hit the nail on the head, it's the amount of use for the small area that we have there. Um, you know, and it's just, unless we have law enforcement there to curtail some of the people coming in and to stop what's going on down there, that's the only way we're gonna correct it. Uh, we do have law enforcement lined up for this next holiday weekend, we'll probably use them more often. Uh, we're fortunate right now, the collections that we've got off the gate will cover that, so as of now, it's not a budgetary impact, but it will become that if we have to keep using law enforcement.
So, explain to me now, you say we cover that, or we have to pay for law enforcement?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, we've, we've got to pay them overtime hours to have on-duty officers down there.
Yeah, you do.
I mean, if we fund the county sheriff, I mean, I don't, the sheriffs aren't, why do we have to pay the, the North County?
These officers are officers that are not on duty, on patrol at the time, so they're off their normal shift, but, but we do have to pay those officers to be there. They're stationed there at the park, uh, for the length of time we have them booked for.
And Rocky, probably forty-five bucks an hour too, is what we pay at the fairgrounds.
Say that again.
Probably forty-five bucks an hour, that's what we pay at the fairground.
Mr. Board, as you indicated, you, you will have to pay for your, what we call off-duty officers, if you may. Um, but at the end of the day, we're prepared to do that for the holiday weekend, as Clint indicated, we have captured enough, you know, you gotta be careful when you say that, 'cause we spend a thousand dollars down there, okay? So we have captured enough money to cover law enforcement for a time, if you will run out of money by doing that.
And you'll run out of officers, because, you know, the, the truth is, I mean, one of the guys that work at the shop, he showed me a picture Monday of this past weekend, and he was telling his friends, 'cause I've made that, I said, they're probably gonna start hauling vehicles, so he's telling them, but don't park here, you know? So, but my point is, but there was still a lot of people there this past weekend. And, uh, now the river's opened back up, guess what, all your boats gonna stop stuck. I, I personally, I mean, I, I'd have no problem, Joel preparing, you connect, I mean, uh, contact whoever. Uh, I know it's not gonna be politically, uh, uh, popular, but y, y, you can't, you can't win this fight, that's just all there is to it.
Ron, Ron's been here longer than all of us, he's been arguing about it for forty years.
You can't, somebody gonna get hurt real bad down there, and we gonna be liable for.
Well, we've already settled one lawsuit down there.
Yep, yep, I'll remind the board, we had that unfortunate situation where someone was punched, and the individual who punched the person, they were in the wind, person came back and sued the county. We were sure we didn't have any liability, 'cause it was a deliberate criminal act, and lo and behold, we had to settle, because we have policies and procedures and restrictions on what you can and can't do, but we don't have anybody there to enforce. The lawyer literally told us it'd be better if we didn't have any rules at all, from a liability standpoint.
Guy, it, it, and I, I don't remember how far, it's been a ways back, a guy moved in and squatted in an old van down.
I remember that.
I remember.
And the SWAT team got in a gunfight with, with the sheriff department, the sheriff department had to call the SWAT, SWAT team, and they killed it.
Yep.
They had a gunfight down there and killed it.
I remember that.
So i- i- it's something that I, 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 I don't, I, I just don't, the county have tried everything I know to, to make that place a decent place, uh, down there, but it just won't work unless you got, I'll say it again, you gotta have permanent law enforcement to, to take care of that little old park.
Joe, how would it work, can, does, does the lease say we can't, I mean, I mean, does, does deed say we can't lease it to somebody? Can we lease it to a private company to maintain and operate it?
I'll double-check, the last time we went down that road, the answer was emphatically no. Um, because I, I'm pretty sure, almost positive, Kevin, check me if I'm wrong, but we have to operate the park. And if we don't, we have to give it back. Now, what I'll do, I, I heard what Commissioner Murphy just said, uh, and if it's a pleasure for the board, I'll brief the issue, I, I'll tell you what the deed allows you to do and what the deed doesn't allow you to do, and then the board can maybe take that up at the next meeting or meeting after that. If, if you want to go that way, it's like Commissioner Murphy, there's letters that have to be written, there's outreach that has to happen, and and then we've got a lot of investment down there.
You know Gilchrist County, they have some parks, and they went in there, they, but they have a lot of room, they have, they, they have a lot of property with it for campgrounds and stuff like that. And they can, and they, there's enough income off of it to maintain it.
That's right.
Well, you can't get enough income off of Rum Island to maintain it.
No.
I mean, it's gonna be up to the taxpayers of Columbia County to maintain this park.
And, and you say that, neither of the Senator folks that you, are not.
And that, that's where I made up.
That's right.
So our taxpayers are spending money so other people can come here and hang out for it.
And, and really and truly, what is it, thirty-five parking spots down there?
I think so, yes, sir.
I think it's thirty-five parking spots. So thirty-five cars can go in there, well, they're in there by six-thirty in the morning, you know, it's just.
They're there, okay.
Commissioner Williams, I, I can't go back as far as you can, but I never will forget.
Who can?
I could, a year into my tenure, Commissioner Weaver called me one Saturday or Sunday, and they were, coming a little rain, they were mudding in the middle of the dirt raid, so bad that they had traffic backed all the way up Rum, what he called it, one thirty-eight. It's, it's always been something. We'll have law enforcement there next weekend, or the fourth, whenever that is, and, um, we do need to settle this though, because we can't just keep throwing law enforcement at it without a budgetary impact. We can for a short minute, but we do need to conclude this somehow.
So what do you need, Joe? What do we need? Do we need a motion?
I guess, I, I mean, at this point, I think we just, I agree with Mr. Commissioner Murphy, just contact the federal agents and say, all right, what, what do y'all want to do?
I, I'll get you a brief, tell you what your options are.
Because they either need to take it back, or they need to amend that deed or something, where we could,
Yep.
put a company down there, lease it out to somebody that can stay there full-time, maintain and operate the park. And if that don't work, I don't, but I don't know if they're gonna be able to make enough, make a living out of it, you know?
Joe, we need to find out how many people that they say can go in there. That's, that's a big thing, you ain't got that?
We got that. Well, you gotta stop it at that point.
We gotta have law enforcement there. If you don't have law enforcement.
Well, you are wrong, man, go down there.
If you don't have law enforcement.
You take them through the woods, they're well.
They gonna do whatever they want to do.
Joe gonna give us some, something and we can look at, okay? All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
In the meantime, we'll see you down there on Fourth of July, Kevin.
I think third, fourth, fifth, sixth, that's when you should be.
All right, David.
Thank you very much, the first one I have is a recommendation for the insurance committee renewal. As you know, we go through this process of every year, trying to renew our insurance, we have an insurance committee made up of all the constitutional officers and the Board of County Commissioners, they all met, they have a recommendation for you, and we have Ms. Anne Edenfield from Gallagher here to discuss proposals to you and run them past you.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioner. Nice to be here today, so I am Anne Edenfield, I'm the Area Senior Vice President for Gallagher. I co-console with Tyson Johnson, who I know y'all are used to seeing for many, many years, and tonight I'm here to talk to you about the insurance committee and the recommendations, so I'm pleased to be here. So this is one of the exhibits that we typically share with you when we're talking about the health plan, it's before you. The Cliff Notes on all of this data is that the health plan continues to operate at a very high favorable rate. We're thrilled, you know, we watch this month by month, the data comes in from Florida Blue, other than three months, that we had some high claims, you'll see that the claims for the majority of this running twelve data is extremely favorable, so we're excited, we like watching it, and, um, certainly enjoy what it's going to mean for the county now. As a reminder, we were here on February fifteenth, and we handed over a pro-share check for six-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars, and that was, um, as many of you that have been involved know, that as the plan performs favorably, Florida Blue shares in those premiums versus claims overages fifty-fifty, and it resulted in a check that came back for six-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. That, of course, is, was a very favorable. So the health insurance summary, so what that means is that we were anticipating a very favorable renewal coming in from Florida Blue, and that's exactly what we got. We got a zero rate increase, a rate hold, and in addition to that, it made us look at the health plan even more closely to say, what can we do? What more can we do for the employees here at the county? So for over two decades, the board has participated in a rate stabilization project, if you will, or benefit program offered by Florida Blue called the HIP program. The HIP program essentially provides funding, uh, to the health plan for employees that don't elect the medical, and that funding that goes to Florida Blue actually helps to offset the cost and make it a little more affordable for all of the employees that do take the health plan. And again, that has been operational for over two decades. Because the health plan continues to operate very favorably, and because we're going on another year of a rate hold, what we propose is to do away with that HIP program, which will put two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars back in the pocket of the county. And we would like to talk to you about what we would like to do and propose, uh, along with the, of course, the insurance committee, under Carrie and David's leadership, of course, uh, some very favorable things for the employees. That two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand that will not go to Florida Blue actually equates to a nine-point-two percent rate decrease or savings to the county by doing away with the HIP program. So, some of the things that we are talking about doing is, uh, sweetening the pot of benefits, if you will. And starting with this next renewal, ten-one, we propose that the county provide employer-paid dental insurance for all employees, and they can buy other insurance if they wish for their dependents, but the county would provide dental insurance for all employees. The same thing would hold true for vision, the little vision benefit, if you will. The, uh, county would provide paid dental vision for the employee level, and then the employees, if they wish to, they can purchase coverage for their families, or the dental and the vision. We've gone back to those providers and we've asked for a buy-up plan. Better benefits that the employees can absolutely go in and purchase if they wish to buy up on the dental and the vision benefits. We're gonna talk about another thing that we would like to do with that. In addition, the county has provided a fifteen-thousand-dollar death benefit, if you will, life insurance, which equates to a benefit. And we have gone back to the standard and we've asked for a thirty-thousand quote, and we recommend that for all employees that are covered, that all full-time employees, that you would give them a thirty-thousand-dollar, uh, benefit, if you will. And then we've gone back for the short-term disability, so we've kind of taken the benefits one by one to see how we can improve them. What can we do? Obviously, we're using some of that two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousands, which is the savings back to the county. But we've gone back to the short-term disability, we've improved those rates again for the county. This is a benefit that is paid for short-term disability, and those rates have been lowered. So what all of this means is that what we are proposing is that with the elimination of that HIP plan, the committee's recommending that the board fund these enhanced benefit package, and for any employee who opts out of the medical, opts not to, we would offer a PAC B program. That PAC B would consist of, those individuals would automatically get the buy-up dental benefit, they would get the buy-up vision benefit, they certainly can purchase dependent-level benefit, but the county is going to pay for the buy-up dental, the buy-up vision, they would actually get a fifty-thousand life insurance policy, they would get the short-term disability policy, and an accident policy by AFLAC for a total cost of about seventy-three thousand to the county, again, that is being offset by the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand savings that will happen by eliminating the HIP plan. So it's, it is, for those employees that have qualified medical coverage elsewhere, they can't just opt out, but if they have coverage with an employer, um, a spouse's plan, and they don't need the, uh, county's health insurance benefit, they would qualify for the PAC B coverage, and they would get this benefit package.
Now, would that benefit package there would not cost the employee nothing, is that correct?
Unless they choose to buy up their dependents.
Okay.
They would get the vision, they would get the dental buy-up plan, which is that better. better increased benefit plan. But they would have to buy their own dependent coverage.
Okay.
But they do get that improved life insurance, they get an Aflac accident policy, that, and they can certainly purchase any of the other supplemental benefits if they wish to. But this PAC-B that we were showing, that would be the benefit package that, again, employees that are opting out of your medical program would receive. So the net savings to Columbia County, the OCC, you have the savings of that $275,000 that I mentioned before, that rate stabilization program that you guys have had in place for many decades. There's a savings because there's a little bit of an admin fee that was paid to Florida Blue for that HIP policy, that $4,900. The dental, there is a cost because, again, the county is going to pay for employee-only dental at the current core benefit, and then allow employees to buy up if they choose. Vision, the same thing, the county would pay for vision benefits, employee level at the current vision level for all employees. They can buy their dependents, and they can buy up if they wish to. The short-term disability is a savings because we were able to renegotiate better rates for the county. And then that Aflac cancer policy, excuse me, that Aflac accident policy, that would be part of that PAC-B package that's being given to the employees that opt out. Overall, once all of the benefits are improved for your current employees, you've got the benefit plan, and then you've got the PAC-B, we're still looking at a substantial savings to the county of roughly $90,000. So nothing but positive messages to share with you tonight.
Chair, if, if employees were added to this, a substantial rate, this would still stand true and probably, for lack of a better word, cheaper, correct?
That is correct. It's really win-win-win. It's more cost-effective for the county. It is a much improved benefit packet for your full-time employees here, and it allows your employees to have that better benefit package offering to buy improved dental benefits, improved vision benefits. They can buy that. We had to make some assumptions as to how many employees would actually buy the buy-up plan. So we were a little conservative on that, but I think we all agree that, why not? Why, why would they not? Because it's not a very costly benefit, if you will, but the benefits absolutely improve.
Looking at the savings here and then some of the upgrades, knowing that, you know, locally, our sheriff's office is on a caesaurium, I guess is the way you say that. But, you know, there's, talking to Tyson the other day.
Oh, yes.
On his way to the golf course. The, you know, he explained to me some of the benefits that could still be sitting in place with that. And this is, this is pretty enhancing for, you know, because I'm not saying their policy doesn't provide this, but this is, this is pretty big.
It, it is a great improvement, and it has been many, many years since this level of benefit offerings have been presented. So it's pretty exciting for all of us to do that as well. So it's, as, as you all know, the competition to attract and retain employees is a real thing. So having this better benefit package all across the board, not just for employees that wish to take the medical, but for your employees that really don't need to buy the medical, that PAC-B benefit package is, is quite an offering. The $50,000 life insurance alone is quite a nice offering. And to think that all of your current full-time employees that have had $15,000 life insurance are getting ready to have $30,000 doubles, that's pretty exciting. We're happy to do that. So obviously, everything improves, and we really haven't touched the pro-share money that was brought up so that, obviously, and we're in another year of pro-share contracting. So that pro-share money came in for plan year '22 and '23, that ended favorably. We're in 2024, and based on that first slide that I showed you, you're operating in a 50/58% loss ratio. So we're going into a new pro-share contract year with things. Now, I don't have a crystal ball, so it, I can't control, and nor can I see what's going to come down the line. But so far, through the reporting periods that we've looked at, the health plan continues to operate well. So we're happy for that.
You know, question from.
No.
So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
I do appreciate Carrie and Lisa's efforts on helping us get here on that. Next one is, we need you to approve the recommendation of the committee.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Murphy?
Second.
Mr. Ford, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign that motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a recommendation for auditing services by the Auditor Selection Committee. As you know, by law, we had to create an auditor selection committee made of all the constitutional officers. The chairman of this committee was put on it, as well as the attorney, being an elected official. This group put out an RFP. The Auditor Selection Committee got the proposals back. We received two, and they reviewed them. They scored them individually. We tallied them, and they came back with Pauline Jones and James Moore were the top two firms, were the only two firms. And they're recommending this board approve the ranking of Pauline Jones, one, James Moore and Company, two, and negotiate with the highest firm, Pauline Jones, to create a contract for our future auditing services.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Phillips on the second. And guys, one thing that we, we did on this to keep the playing field level, you know, we have a, 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 a local preference to, if you live in a business in Columbia County, and we only charge five points for that, so it would not create a, 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 give the local person an advantage. So of the scoring, Jones only, only, Pauline Jones only received five points more when the other company didn't receive anything. So the local preference did not determine who we selected. All in favor of the motion, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign that motion carries.
And again, for the sake of the public, I want to reiterate, this committee was composed of all of the constitutional officers, the attorney and the chairman of the board, so it was not a county staff recommendation.
And they, and too, I've got a hats off to, to David Staff. Erica did a great job in putting that together and putting it on the streets and going through it. And our county attorney was tremendous help by going through and asking questions and just putting Eric, where everybody hit the same thing at the same time, and didn't have to make, well, did it say that, or did it say that? Everybody heard everything about this process at the same time. They didn't have to try to say, well, I didn't understand that. They had questions that were answered. And Jones and, and those deal came out on top.
It was all done in the open, in public sessions. And so it was a good process. And I appreciate everyone's help with that. BA 2447, approval of grant F-0135. During Hurricane Adalia, obviously, a lot of places got damaged. The state had a special legislative session. And they said, we want to give money to the fiscally constrained counties damaged by Adalia. And in doing so, they allotted $436,364 to Columbia County. And they said, Columbia County, here's this money. What we want you to do is go out and look at your EOC plans and revise them to be a multi-jurisdictional, multi, not just the EOC, but include fire, sheriff, EMS, and all these other sources. So yes, we did a plan a couple, last year, year before last, to design a new EOC. This money is going to change that plan to include all the other emergency response, first responder services. So having said that, that's the only thing we can spend it on. We can't spend it on construction. So this is a grant that we're asking you to approve.
Make a motion up for BA 24-47.
Motion by Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Phillips. All in favor? Yes, you got what you.
I just want to say something before we vote. David, as we all know, while we're on this subject, they're predicting a very active hurricane season this year.
Active as the normal.
Oh, I would like to schedule a meeting or workshop with Shane and 911, and let's talk about some of the things that happened during Adalia, that we do a little planning different, maybe where we can be a little more prepared for the hurricane this time.
Good idea.
Would you like that at the next board meeting?
Yes, that'd be good.
So we'll do that after the July 3rd board meeting.
That's a good idea. I like it.
Do, our next meeting would be a morning meeting. Let's do it after the morning meeting.
And that's Wednesday, July 3rd.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, it's a motion, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign that motion carries.
The next one is an emergency generator. The tower generator at the EOC is having some severe problems with the rods and the internal functions of it, and it just either needs a massive repair or a replacement. The repair is going to cost $25,000 with a 30-day warranty. Or you can go out and buy a new one for $32,000 and get a two-year warranty. We're requesting board approval us to go out and buy the new generator at $32,000 with a two-year warranty.
So moved. Second.
Well, motion by Mr. Hollisworth, second by Mr. Murphy, that we buy the new one. All in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign that motion carries.
BA 2448, request for funds for the North Florida Water Utility Authority. They came to you, they asked for seed money of $100,000 from Columbia County, $100,000 from Swanee County. You said, bring it back to the agenda. This would appropriate the money and place it in an account that we could give to.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ford, second by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign that motion carries.
And as a reminder, their next meeting is July 1st at the TDC Room. And the next month, they'll go to Swanee County. And then my last item, I believe, I don't remember the additions. But my last item is the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Countywide Program. This is a program we get every year from the Justice Department. And this JAG comes out, they say, here's your allocation. And we let the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department, if they want it, use it. This year, both the Sheriff and the Police Department would like to use these funds.
David, I have one question on this here before we, before we make a motion or vote on it. On the certificate of participation, it says, "For purposes of coordinating this preparation of application for grant funds with the Office of Criminal Justice Grants, the following individual is designated as county coordinator for the county's FY23 JAG Countywide Subawards." Now, this is obviously given to the Board of County Commissioners. So why wouldn't we have you or somebody on your staff as the coordinator of this? We're ultimately responsible for this money.
You could.
So, I mean, I would, I don't, I think we should apply for the grant, but I think we should be the coordinator of the grant, somebody with the Board of County Commissioners staff.
Yeah, because the coordinator is the one that's going to have to divvy up the money between both the Sheriff and Lake City Police Department.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the grant with that stipulation, that the Board of County Commissioners is the coordinator of the money.
Motion by Mr. Ford.
Second.
Second by Mr. Phillips. All in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign that motion carries.
Ms. Clark, you got that accurate, didn't you?
Okay.
And Joe, nothing prohibits us from doing that, right?
Nothing I'm aware of, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No, you had, you got, you got two.
We got a couple more things.
You got two items amended. amended.
But they're really more Kevin Kirby's stuff. The Chamber of Commerce would like us to close the roads that Kevin Kirby always closes during fireworks event. Mary Ethel and Bascom Norris.
Motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ford, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign that motion carries.
Kevin's department then will close those roads during fireworks. The last one is a solid waste collection franchise free application by Republic Services of Florida. This is pretty standard. When somebody wants to become a franchisee, they turn in their application and you approve it. Came in late, they're wanting to get discarded right away.
What, what do they, what do they want to do now?
Become a, you know how we have franchisees in solid waste?
Right.
For commercial enterprises? That's it.
Class three.
Roll-offs, roll-offs.
So they want to come, they want to be in the roll-off business of Columbia County?
Correct.
Roll-off business only, naturally.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Ford. I don't have a second. Motioned out for lack of a second. Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right, we'll move on down to open three-minute comments. Open three-minute comments?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Bonnie Coffey-Konone. I am founder of Abolish Abortion Florida and NoTo4.org. I am here once again to request that Columbia County adopt a resolution formally opposing Amendment Four on the ballot and urging Columbia County residents to vote against it. Since my last visit here, two counties in Florida have adopted a resolution. Collier County, Florida, adopted a resolution, and Gilchrist County adopted a resolution, both formally opposing Amendment Four and urging their citizens to vote against it. The amendment is intentionally deceptive and intended to codify abortion into our state constitution. It would be beyond the scope of the legislature to fight anything about abortion up to viability, but viability is not even defined. It is to be defined by the patient's healthcare practitioner, and healthcare practitioner is not defined also. So that could be, you know, a podiatrist, a tattoo artist, a dental hygienist, anybody could be a healthcare practitioner. I am urging the county to vote to adopt a resolution formally opposing Amendment Four, which will be on the November 5th ballot. You all have been appointed to your positions by God. You are to be His ministers for good and to protect the citizens of Columbia County. 66 women in Columbia County have had abortions so far this year. 32,000 human beings have been murdered in Florida so far this year, preborn human beings. I ask for you to put this on your agenda, adopt a resolution formally opposing Amendment Four. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now keep coming back.
Anyone else? Three minutes? Don't see anyone, or any other comments from the board? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Anything? Staff?
No, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
No, sir, thank you.
All, all right, well, I have, I have to have a motion to adjourn.
I'm out.
All right, we adjourn.